Sir. Lord, we come before you on this day and give you thanks for all you've seen fit to give us. Just the way you blessed us and moved in our lives, we can't thank you enough. Watch over those who protect us, whatever their responsibility in public safety. They have families too, and we want them to go home to them. Lord, give our farmers what they need to grow the crops, that they need to make money, and that we need to survive. And as this board meets tonight, we ask that you bless them with the wisdom they need to make the right decisions in your sight. When all is said and done, we will thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please hold you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is, uh, Dr. Agenda.
Sir.
Let's take it all the way. Okay, uh, next is public comments concerning agenda items. The public comments. Okay, uh, we went into the call meeting section. I guess we're gonna vote on these two resolutions, so I look please. Uh, number one, consider adopting resolution two oh two four dash oh three dash oh one to amend the association, County Commission of Georgia defined benefit plan for Turner County to allow the employer to amend the plan with respect to one or more cases of employees to eliminate the requirement that the sixty months included in the calculation of a class two participant's average monthly compensation be consecutively and authorized chairman to sign the resolution on behalf of the county.
Motion.
They have motion set, all the way. Number two, consider approving plan agreement for defined benefit plan for Turner County to amend the plan with respect to one or more classes of employees to calculate a class two participant's average monthly compensation over a period longer than the previous one hundred twenty months. If necessary, to capture the participant's highest average monthly compensation and authorize the chairman to sign agreement on behalf of the county. Motion. Add a second, all the way.
Absent.
Okay, next we have speakers, uh, Joe Wright. County assessor update.
How y'all doing this evening?
Um, before you start, I don't know if everybody noticed, but, uh, Kim Hannah is retired, decided to retire. I just found out yesterday afternoon, and I guess Joe's gonna maybe give us some options on this. Okay, Joe.
I wanted to give y'all a brief update on the current reevaluation that's going on with the twenty-four implementation as well. Um, all the field work has been completed, commercial, residential, ag, industrial, everything's been done. Um, we're in the audit phase at this time where we're going in and we're auditing the field work. And there's a whole lot of audit reports that we've built through the years to really check the integrity of the data. And then once the audit phase is completed, we'll go in and start. We're also qualifying sales at this time, which is a real important part of the process. And had a conversation with a property owner in Turner County today. I've been in the office all day. He was talking about all his ten thirty-one, ten thirty-one money just being exchanged around, and you know, people coming in from out of state and how it's really affecting our local market. And we had a, had a good discussion about that, but sales qualification is really important, and we're going through that process as well. We have a team, and that's strictly all they do. And then, um, after that's completed, we'll set the schedules, um, run ratio studies, we'll get all that approved by the Board of Assessors, and we'll be, be ready to bring y'all into compliance and start the appeal process. But I anticipate notices won't go out until mid-June, uh, maybe toward the end of June. That just allows us the time because by law, we're basing our date on January one. But we have standards in place that also allow us to span the effective date of January one because we're audited on current year sales versus current year appraisals. And so, we want to review as much data coming into twenty twenty-four as we possibly can and, uh, before we pull the trigger, so. But I'll keep y'all updated on that process, um, as that time nears and kind of give y'all a heads up and be prepared for when y'all constituents start calling y'all, and y'all can just refer right on the meet, so. Um, but that's a quick update on the current revow. As far as Kim's retirement, she did, we had a Board of Assessors meeting at ten o'clock this morning, and she submitted her official letter announcing her retirement, and her last day will be April the thirtieth. Um, she had started toying around with this idea a couple of months ago. She had came to me and asked me if I knew of any up and comings in the business that were nearing, you know, ready to take their appraisal free exam, which is required to be a chief appraiser, or if I knew any current chief appraisers that might be looking for a move. And, you know, we talked about it, discussed it, and it's, it's really hard to find any level of appraisers at this time, whether they're entry level all the way up to the chief appraisers. There's several counties right now in the state of Georgia that are hiring or, or, you know, are advertising for chief appraisers positions. And one thing is, our company, G-Mass, has done is we have developed a scope of services that we will be y'all's chief appraiser. You know, if y'all so desire, now if y'all want to advertise and see if you can get somebody in there five days a week, forty hours a week. Uh, you know, I completely understand that, and really that office is, is, you know, is run by the Board of Assessors, but yet y'all fund it. And so I did present this proposal to the Board of Assessors this morning. They approved it and approved me coming to y'all tonight to, to request funding in this position because this is the direction that they would like to move. But, uh, we've passed out this proposal, and I won't bore you with reading over the scope of services because I know y'all won't take action on this until next week. But basically, what this scope of services covers is everything that the duties required of that office to submit an annual digest, including having you a certified chief appraiser that your digest will be approved by the Department of Revenue on an annual basis. In addition to that, rather than hiring one chief appraiser, and just give y'all just kind of a brief history to bring you up to where we are today. If y'all remember when Sylvia Lamb retired a couple of years ago, y'all entered into a consulting contract with us rather than replacing that position. All right, that consulting contract will go away. So what you're looking at is that consulting contract and Kim's salary run around eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. All right, my proposal is for a hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year, so you're looking at a little bit of an increase there, but you don't have to hire a chief appraiser. You're gonna get a fully compliant digest every year. We're gonna review one-third of parcels each year in Turner County. So there won't be no span of two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-four of going that sixteen-year period without properties actually being physically reviewed. So one-third will be done each year, so every property has boots on the ground every three years. We'll keep your schedules current, so you don't get, get back into a non-compliant situation of having to spend two and a quarter on a total reevaluation. And so you're basically getting a team of, we have fourteen field appraisers now, we have eight people in management, and of course, we have our administration team, CEOs and that kind of thing. It's just a, it's a wealth of experience, and naturally, I want to sell my services to y'all. And we do have some counties that are doing this. I'm meeting with county manager and the Board of Assessors in Willcox County tomorrow evening for the same exact thing. Their chief appraiser resigned, uh, submitted her two weeks resignation a couple of weeks ago, and her last day was Friday. And so they called me and asked me to attend the meeting over there at five-thirty tomorrow afternoon, and they're considering the same thing. We are doing it in counties, the DOR has been very supportive of these type of contracts. Because right now, the way our laws are written, is you have to be a class one county that has to contract chief appraiser services, but the calls of the hard time finding qualified certified help, they've kind of accepted this as an acceptable manner to proceed and, and run the offices day to day. And as far as your requirements for the county that's outlined in the scope of services, uh, y'all are already doing everything. We have our office space, we have our, uh, off-site access through the computers. Y'all are requiring that equipment that's needed, and then to provide an employee to handle daily activities in the office. I'll be here as needed for property owner appointments. I'll be here for all the Board of Assessors meetings. I'll attend these meetings at your request. Keep y'all updated on what's going on. And Herman McCord has agreed that he would like to stay on full-time and be that person to run the office day to day. And he would have constant contact with me for anything that he had questions on. And, you know, as we see more and more of these type of contracts coming on, right now, we have six project managers that scatter out all over the state. And, uh, you know, I go as far as north as Spalding County and as far south as Valdosta and Charlton County. And they're looking at hiring an assistant project manager to help with FaceTime in offices on a daily basis and things like that as needed. And this time of the year when we're dealing with all the covenants and home state applications and that kind of thing. Right now, we're getting it done, but it, it's like everybody else, we could use a little help, and we're looking into that to make sure that this role continues to run successfully. And, uh, this also includes processing of the personal property returns. You know, that's a position that's kind of been spread out in that office for years because dating back to Tommy Joe's days, and then that, when I came after him, it's always been three positions. Now, when you look at having to pay salaries and then benefits on top of salaries, you know, by contracting this out and having that one full-time employee and then let us handle everything else, I, I feel like it's a win-win situation. And, um.
Um, when you mentioned Kim's salary, did that include the benefits, the insurance?
Uh, that's just, that's salary. I didn't include anything.
That's include all that.
That's right. That's correct. That was just what.
Eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah. So when you consider that, it could very well be a pretty lateral move.
And then, um, the one thing I was concerned about was customer service. But with Herman staying there, he would have that ability for folks to just walk in and get some answers, and if not, then he could reach out to y'all. Because we're a small county, and they're used to having that ability to walk in the door and make sure that they have someone that they know that they can say, hey, help me figure this out.
That's right. And then that's why we require those. We want somebody in that, and it's, and we're fortunate, we have had people walk in off the street that didn't know anything about our business, and we've had the train running on a day-to-day basis. So having his wealth of knowledge that he's gained over the last few years being in that position will be a huge benefit too, so.
Well, it'd be worth a lot to the, to the county for, for it to be done on a timely manner, you know, in a way we haven't really been used to.
That's right. Yes, and we would.
But, uh, you know, we would. I think it's a way to go. Uh, Renee has some concerns that she was wanting to sit and talk with you on if you talked to her yet or not.
Okay.
She relies a lot on that office, as you know.
Right.
And she was still wanting to know if she could still call you and, and get all that information.
Well, I'll sit down with her today. She, she has some things that she wanted me to look at today and review, which I did. I'm gonna follow over her in the morning. She has some things going on where she's been at the office the last couple of days, but I'll assure her, and she and I have talked and emailed quite a bit over the last couple of weeks and kind of prepare her for not having, you know, it was, it was an adjustment not having Sylvia anymore, and then now it's gonna be another adjustment I have with Kim, but we're gonna make it as smooth as possible.
Can I ask that question? Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next speaker is our librarian, Ms. Christie.
I will go back up, please.
I did. This is Kim Spencer. She's our CFO of the Coastal Plain Regional Library System, and she's just gonna give the forward.
So we, we've talked about how to do this, and we said we do bad news first, and not bad news. But, um, and then Christie will do the fun part. But first, I want to say thank you for the support that you give the library. With your support, we've been able to live within our means with the current staffing. What we're here for, the bad news is, we would really like to return Christie to full-time. And to do that, we need more funding. So when you start working on the budget, we are gonna be requesting an additional twenty thousand dollars. So that would mean our total funding was eighty thousand.
That is, that's not for the salary. That is.
It's not just for salary.
Right.
And what led to that big of an increase is that our health insurance costs are almost doubling, and that's imposed on us by the state, and there's no alternative to avoid that. So I'm sure, I know you're all looking at increasing employee costs as well, so.
So, so, but your question is for insurance?
It's for insurance. It's for additional hours and insurance to cover the benefit cost.
Insurance, that was your second.
To put her on the library's insurance.
Okay.
Um, so when you start working on the budget, we'll, we'll have to have a conversation, get that submitted. Otherwise, if you have any questions for me.
Have you approached the city, the city?
We have approached the city and the Board of Ed. We are also, we're approaching all of our funding agents. Um, we're making that request in proportion to the amount of funding we currently provide.
So the twenty thousand is, would be all ours?
It would be yours here.
So each organization would give an additional thirty-three percent?
Y'all did factor in the increase you're getting through SPOSS.
So SPOSS doesn't go for salaries. It only goes for capital improvements.
But that, if you could offset some of the, you have to pay less on capital improvements.
Yes.
And you could shift some of your money.
We are, Christie's, I think, gonna talk about some SPOSS projects we're doing tonight, so.
We're very grateful for the increase in SPOSS.
Yeah, we are definitely. We're, we're grateful for all of the funding you give us. I'll sit down and let the funding person talk.
Okay, yeah. Echoing what Kim said, thank you so much for your support. Um, it's, it's wonderful. We are about to undergo a renovation beginning on Monday. We hired Mitch Morlock. He's gonna be painting and carpeting the entire inside of the facility. And with SPOSS funding, we also just replaced our front door. So he's gonna do a little bit of touch-up painting out there for that. Um, it lets in, we, we put in a glass door, and it lets in so much sunlight. We've heard nothing but positive comments about that. Because of this, because of this project, we're gonna be closed for three weeks, and we are gonna have a satellite office set up at the Chamber of Commerce back at the original library building. We're gonna have, um, limited hours and service, services there. There'll be, um, information in the paper about that tomorrow, and we have that information at the library. We're gonna have books, um, DVDs, launchpads, which don't require internet access, Chromebooks, which do require internet access, um, and computers set up for people at the Chamber of Commerce to come in and use. Um, we'll always have a staff member there for the hours that we're open. And in general, our patrons have been wonderful about it. We've encouraged them to check out the maximum number of books, which is fifty, and people have been walking out the door with fifty books in their arms multiple times. Um, so that's really good. After that, we plan to have a grand reopening celebration in May. Um, we're gonna have it on Thursday, May thirtieth, from four to six P.M. Along with Ashley, she's gonna, um, have the giant scissors and do her ribbon cutting. Uh, and we are going to launch our summer reading program on that same day. Our summer reading program is where we invite all of the children in the community to come in and do fun reading-related, literacy-related activities, basically five days a week. We're gonna do it throughout June and July. Last year, we just did it in June. It was my very first day of work was June first last year, so it was a little overwhelming, but I'm already in planning mode, and we've got lots that we're gonna be doing with the kids to get them in. If I were to, uh, become a full-time manager, then there are other programs that I would like to do, including getting tutors in that would actually be educated in helping kids learn to read. And I would like to introduce a typing club, because I know that in the elementary school, they have a typing club in school, and it really helps the kids' literacy knowledge, and so I would like to have that. We have the resource to do it. We just don't have time to do it. We have, you know, twenty Chromebooks. So we've got that going on. We also have some senior programming that we're, we're starting. Uh, Ms. Christie is gonna be leading chair yoga for senior citizens and some breathing and meditation for teenagers. And we have a, um, a private organization which has given us a grant, a, a monthly stipend. And we've got Bingo coming up for, for seniors and all kinds of other great activities. So in addition to book clubs, oh, wait, one last thing that we would do if we had, um, a full-time manager is we would extend for weekend and evening hours. Because we're only open nine to five right now, and certainly people who work out of Ashburn and get off at five, we'd like to be able to accommodate that more often than the once a month that we're open in the evenings now. If you have any questions for me?
Did you put that project up a bid?
Oh, we certainly did. We got three bids. Actually, we got four bids, yes. Yes, we did. And we were, we were pleased to be able to go with the local contractor. We got, we got them from as far as north Georgia, in Tipton.
Maybe who? The lowest bidder?
Um.
He went with the first bidder?
We did not go with the lowest bidder. No, sir.
Why you bid it off even though it was the lowest bidder?
Well, we didn't trust the lowest bidder because he didn't come down here from north Georgia. I sent him pictures, and he told us, um, a, a price that he could do per square foot without wanting to know any information about it. And he asked if he could just put the carpet up to the bookcase and then carpet around it. And I said, no, we would like to be able to have the ability to rearrange the furniture in the future, and that's just not standard carpeting. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, number one on the general discussion is discuss equipment for public works.
Last time we talked, y'all were asking for financial information about getting financed, and here's some numbers that would be close to ours. We won't know exactly for ours, but we'll submit our information. They know our rates, but the interest rate and the monthly payment should be close to what this is. It's on the two, it's on the two percent. But, uh, it's be five, five point two percent interest at monthly payments for two trucks, which is four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, will be around nineteen hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that ain't gonna be ours that number, but that, that's close to what ours would be once we put all our information in. Our last three Augusts, and all that had to be sent off to their ours.
Can I speak real quick, if you don't mind me adding on? For those of you who don't remember me, my name is Chris Larnum of Worldwide Equipment. I spoke with the bank. That number is the rate, because I know you asked. I, I drilled him down. The change on the payment would only be a few dollars after you're approved. It, the, the change would only come from, they do theirs, I believe he said on the twentieth or the twenty-first is the payment date. Depending on how far out you are, that's what would change, the number of days is what would change that actual payment date. That rate is the rate, um, and unless it goes down, if it doesn't, they'll be more happy to offer that as well. But, um, that is, it wouldn't change dramatically at all. You'd still have a few dollars either way.
So this is a fixed rate?
Yes, sir.
It is fixed.
And that's, and all we'll be paying is just interest. We won't pay nothing, none of the premium, but principal of it for the first year.
So at eighteen months, we would basically?
That's, we'd, we'd get rid of it in twelve months. We're gonna keep it for all eighteen months.
And then we just sell it, and there's this belief, because they're used, it's, because it's such a low used vehicle, we would not hopefully be upside down when we sell it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And when that, supposedly how it's gonna work, when it gets sent off to auction, we'd have two more of it going on the ground here as they pick it into it, just keeping it rotating every year.
So there won't be a time period where we're out of the truck?
No, sir. With, with exception to acts of God or, or a strike, um, no, we will order the time. I work with him. We have the, the mucks kind of planned out. We'd say, we got a weekly, uh, report from MAC on their production levels, transfer levels and everything. And we also work with Kim with as well. We get the same things, so. We're, we're pretty decent on that. Give or take a week or two on each side of the day you want. We're typically there. More often than not, it's one or two weeks over, and that's from the manufacturing, production, having to push it out a little bit.
And our, our vehicle maintenance costs are strictly just the re- recurring maintenance. Everything else would be warranty covered, right?
Yes, sir. Always just the old thing. You probably wouldn't do probably one a year, yeah. For municipal, yeah.
And also I encourage you again, J-Wood Auction is the site. They just had an auction two weeks ago, or last week. The spec that we've presented to you grows to highest once again, like it does every year. There were trucks from twenty-three and twenty-four, a twenty-four with around twenty thousand miles. They sold all of them from between two thirty-five and two fifty. Those trucks were bought for right at two hundred. So even with the seven percent that the auction takes off of that, you're looking, things like fifteen-four, if you do two hundred and thirty on. You're still making, this time on these trucks, thirty thousand on a truck. Which again, I want to manage expectations. That's not the way this program typically works. But becoming, coming out of COVID, it's, it's wanky. It is. But it's just like this, three or four thousand dollars either way every year is normally where you end up.
And remind me, Justin, the, the current vehicles, current trucks, we just would auction them?
And that, that JW, they would come down, they'd go ahead and give me a price about what they'd bring at auction, and then they'd pick them up and take it to their auction and sell them for us.
And could we apply that to this note, or we'd be better off be putting it back into the general fund?
And you'd put it in the general funds and pay the taxes on them, so.
Has he come by, John? I will take care of that. First thing I want, get my mind up.
Do you have any questions?
I got two more things, y'all, man.
Okay.
On the, we just, the county just got awarded six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and seven hundred and eleven dollars on for, and it's, we had no match for it, but it'll be, so I could continue some more resurfacing and some other work. What I, what I would like to do is Mason Dixon Lane, right there from the fire tower off of One Way, uh, probably seven, eight years ago, there was some repair work got done, and they kind of created the whole road, all the way across the road. There ain't no road. It's just all concrete. And it's in pretty bad shape, and there's been a lot of complaints. I would like to take some of that money to repair that and then take the rest of it to continue on Denham with the widening and the resurfacing on it. And I got two options on Mason Dixon. One of them is removing all the concrete and then coming back and register resurfacing, which would cost ninety-one thousand, five hundred. And the option B, which I, I like to go with because it's cheaper, is that you'll come back with, they'll put a couple of layers of leveling down. That's probably, they'd probably go up to four, four layers of leveling to level it off to get over all the concrete house going up and down. And that, that saves us around thirty thousand, because it's fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to do that. And we can put that other thirty thousand back on the resurfacing.
Concrete is stable. It's just.
It's just stable.
The level.
They just, they gonna have to lay a couple of layers of leveling down to match the whole road up there with.
It'll be a big base under it. It's gonna be a base.
But that, that's adding up with them building shoulders back, building shoulders up to the road and taping it off to the side roads. That should have no problem with that back road anymore. And the other thing I've got would be on, uh, we got thirty-five hundred dollars left over on this year's revenue from the asphalt that got resurfaced. And I like to put some rumble strips down on Waterloo Rebecca at the intersection of One and Seven, where they had some wrecks and some had died from it. I like to put rumble strip down on that section, and then rumble strips on High Hill and Hawthorne Road. There've been a couple of accidents that almost happened there where people didn't say to stop sign and ran across it. Almost got hit. I can, I got a quote from Pink, which is finna go out to Denham Road to do the striping, the permanent striping on the road after they just resurfaced it. They can come in and put the thermal flash and rumble strips down for us, and it'll cost us that thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty. We can take that thirty-five hundred that we got left over and add to it, and we won't add, we won't over about eleven thousand dollars. We can take some of that money from that grant or some money from T-SWAT and pay that.
Cause some of that comes in that six hundred thousand, or?
Some of it could, yeah.
You bought, man?
Sounds good.
I don't have any issue. I'm not, I mean, I'm almost got something a little bit of.
I know with that, with that being six hundred and something thousand, that's why I come to y'all asking if y'all okay with me going that route with that money, and I can get everything rolling with it. Because if we send it out today, we can receive the money within thirty days.
And I like the leveling layers, say that money, use that to finish some other jobs as well.
Somebody got a question?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Any other comments?
I won't speak.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I'd like to say on behalf of the Thunderant Festival, thank y'all for your support of the festival. I hope that everybody who came out had a good time, and I just want to say it is a community effort. It is a lot of work from a lot of different people to make all that work, and, um, I hope, I hope everybody liked it. Um, the second thing I really want to talk about, and I, I hope I don't embarrass her to death, but Ms. Mandy Cole has got a college and career fair coming up Thursday that she has put a lot of work into, and I just want to brag on her for a minute. She's got fifty-two of our local businesses sign up to come, um, they're gonna start at eight, and correct me if I'm wrong, eight-thirty to two-thirty, they're gonna have the seniors all the way through the middle school is gonna come through the civic center and, uh, just kind of see what kind of careers are available locally for our different, um, different kids. We've got seven colleges, right? Yep. And, uh, they've got this really cool thing. It's called Be, Be Pro something. What is it?
Be Proud Go Pro.
Be, Be Proud Go Pro, and it's a giant simulator, uh, semi-truck thing. And it's got these, um, different little things y'all, the kids can go, and, uh, I don't know how to describe it. I don't know. I'm silly. But, um, it's, they, they learn how to drive. It simulates driving like big machines and stuff like.
Virtual technology.
Virtual technology kind of stuff. So they're kind of, you know, they can get behind the wheel of some of that stuff and try it out without killing anybody. So we're just really excited about it. I know I'm really proud of Andy, and I'm really proud of our local businesses. We're stepping up and coming up and supporting our school system, and, um, I know last year you had a really good turnout with it as well, and I think, hopefully, it'll have a big impact on our, our students. And we actually have a students', uh, corner where we're gonna have, um, some of our student, uh, businesses. Um, some of our, our kids in the school that have served their own businesses are gonna have, um, their own thing. So I don't know if I can invite them to come in. Maybe they can come in with rotary, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, about twelve-thirty, uh, if y'all want to walk through and, uh, and look at it and, uh. it and, uh... Wait, yeah, we would love to have.
We would love to have you.
Yes, love to have, have to have each and every one of you. So, yeah, thank you.
I will be doing voter registration. So I will be there all morning trying to get the seniors and impress upon them, this is a big, big, big important election. And they need to get registered. So I'll be there all morning also.
Anybody? Yeah, me. Y'all, y'all correct me when I get it wrong. Some months ago, didn't the county raise the millage rate one percent? And I thought they backed out of it. We didn't, we didn't ever raise it. Okay. But that's gone, right? And I've seen the people in Rebecca looking and stuff at the property. Does that mean that property taxes they gonna pay weighted higher than what it's been being and taxes is gonna go up? I'm asking.
Well, I mean, the last time y'all had a, a value update was two thousand eight. And the way this market has been, especially over the last five years, yes, y'all will see some increased values. Because we, we were out of compliant and we got to bring it up to fair market value. Now, as far as the taxes go, you know, they'll, we'll provide them with the inflation that they're caused by the increase. And then they'll have some tough decisions to make to fund the county because their cost is going up like everybody else's. And, but most likely, they'll be able to roll back the millage rate some to also get some of the property tax increase.
And correct me if I'm wrong on this. When I was a boy, if you had a lot of property, you paid a lot of taxes. Is that the way it's gonna work now? The more y'all own or, you know, some people try to better theirself. But when you beat them down and stuff, they don't, why, why should I try if you're going, y'all understand what I'm talking about? And I ain't trying to cause no confusion or nothing. I'm just asking because I don't know you enough.
But there's a lot of things to predict.
And it, with him surveying and stuff, I'm, I, and I could be wrong. I look for taxes to go up. And I'm gonna ask y'all this. Just remember, somebody has to pay for what y'all agreed up with. I'll just note this eighty-eight thousand dollars up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. To me, that's a lot of money for Turner County. We're small. Y'all know where we at. We small, y'all. And I'm gonna ask this question. I'm being facetious. If you do raise taxes, you gonna come tell people in Rebecca you raising? Because I'm closest to them and you know who they coming to first. Me and Ms. Mary, especially if I'm up there. Anyway, bye. Thank y'all. Thank you. All right, uh, here, I should go in the executive section for real estate.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, ask that we amend that motion to include personnel based on the conversation I had with, um, our board.
I think we should shoot him in there, right?